The second page in this little packet is pretty much what we looked at last week with one very significant change, and that's the first one. We did get our insurance back, there's no insurance. So that is like a super duper wonderful piece of news. And in fact, we're looking at possible, we are, we're looking at a slight decrease in rates. So folks will realize a somewhere between a one and a half to three and a half percent decrease in their rate depending on which plan they're in. We need to also talk about at some point what we do with the savings that is on the county side. There's two sets of savings. One is the employee who will see that reduction, but we also see it on our side as well.
Guess what? That amount is almost exactly the amount that we're going to lose in state rep, almost exactly.
They didn't figure that out.
Preliminary. No, no, that's just a coincidence, but...
That is true.
Real close to the amount. You know, and again, we've got to look through these numbers and make sure that that's the correct amount.
But it's absolutely joyful to lose, we'd be very happy. No increased insurance rates, and you're actually going to see a small decrease, which rarely happens, rarely happens, so we'll take it. The electricity costs, 225, we're pretty sure about that number, we'll keep monitoring it each month, and there could be an adjustment to that in the next two months before the final, but we don't think so. So that third bullet about the new money from the state and the 5% increase over the biennium, we now need to look at the wording now that the budget's passed. We do think it's real that there is a 3% increase and that will have no impact on local money since we did the 2% increase last year. So that's good news too. I mean, we're looking at a 3% increase for all employees, and that's good. To complete the, this is where we get into additional funding from the county, complete the promised step increase, and moving forward with that is $510,000. We talked about the market adjustments to salaries. We did all of them, it's 2.3, 2.5 million. We talked about doing it in phases, recommending phase one for teachers being 11 to 25 years, and if we can do bus drivers in there, we would do that as well. So that's, adult dependent final funding, just like we said. So if that was phase one, it's below a million dollars. And then the final, or the next to the final bullet on there about critical needs of personnel and nonlabor costs, if you want to just kind of thumb to the next two pages, what we've given me is kind of our working list of needs. And the first one is basically personnel has to do with people, whether adjusting stipends or days worked, but then also in a lot of cases, you'll see it's 31 and three quarters new positions, full time equivalents. And on the last page, you'll see some things that are outside the personnel. A couple of them are going to happen, you know, we have to get it in our budget somehow. The mountain list of governor schools would increase, utility shortfall, we'll have to do that. And then there's a couple of little things, you know, that could be one of the issues of having so many people that we're hiring. It actually costs us more money to do all of the involved paperwork and tests or background checks and all that kind of thing. So it's costing us more money to do that, to need to increase that as well. And we're also realizing that having some software in place that would help us manage all that, something we should have anyhow, but that's becoming a bigger, bigger deal. But all those things listed there are true needs. There's, I, you know, we try to talk to people about this is not a wish, this is something you need to do your job, and that includes all these positions. So what staff will be doing here is doing a priority of all these things, because we know we're not, we're not going to be getting $2.3 million to do that. I've put a recommendation in there last time to start somewhere, and that's four positions, and that's at $267,000. So at this point in time, what I'm asking, looking for is guidance on, is that what we want to do? You know, do you have, is there another area that you want to put more emphasis on? Do you want me to look at less positions, more positions? You know, we're getting, typically what we would do is we'll have this work session, and then we'll come forward with a recommendation to vote on next Wednesday. So that's kind of what we're doing. Happy to have discussion about the budget.
I think we've said, as years, we have a task to do. What I see here, electrical costs, the rates are going up, they're going up. The name of a promise, and I would like to stand by that, and we do the second part of the step increase. As we've said, I think, you know, we asked for phase one, maybe coming back to phase one, get that amount. At least we needed to start phase, we had to start somewhere. And I think we'll work our way through it. I don't, Rob, the only thing that I keep hearing on the news, and I haven't been able to find anything deeper about it, I've tried a little bit of everything, but when they give just sort of that quickie summation on the news of the budget, they say it also included money for new positions, like more guidance counselors and things like that. Have you seen anything other than the flat amount or the template amount that we're going to get?
It would come through the basic aid. The SOQ, they would increase the ratios, or decrease them rather, in the SOQs, and that would mean they would fund through SOQs more positions. When we looked at it initially, I think we were already at the level they were stepping up to. Not saying we don't need more help in those areas, but with the SOQs being the bare minimum, and as we've said, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to operate a school division at the levels that, you know, they're funded at the minimum levels, so...
So it would be...
In the basic aid, and then what happens because our membership's decreasing, we really don't see a net increase maybe, because again, the membership is projected to drop a little bit next year from where we have been currently budgeted.
On the electric increase, is that ever still a shortfall, or is there rate increase?
We're still trying to analyze. We have, we believe that there's some rate increase when it comes to...
There's two fees, one's a PCA fee, and then the other's a DEV, demand response, maybe DRP. So we're looking at those individually, but it seems like they have creeped up significantly over the last few years, so that could be part of it. And then also part of it is making sure we manage our buildings appropriately, so with night setbacks and all of that, so...
With the energy management system in the newer schools, say like the junior high, the newest one, does it have any gas going to it, or is it all...
It's all electric.
All electric, so that's an increase. With the upgrades at some of the others, have we seen a decrease in, say propane or heating oil? I mean, to kind of offset that increase?
We have.
We have?
We have seen a decrease in some of those other propane and fuel oil.
And also sewer and water, we've seen savings that we can attribute, we believe, to the conservation.
Just seems like quite a number to me, 225,000.
It is, I agree.
I mean, just something's not right, and I mean, the demand, I'm sure our schools are classified as commercial buildings, but we don't have a peak. Like, they do that to big businesses, like DuPont are exalted now, when they spike up because they're using, you know, at a certain timeframe, and you get, you get charged for that usage. So, I mean, ours should be pretty much constant, the lights are on, the heat's on, and that's just how it is. But I'm sure you've looked at all the energy management to make sure it's...
We're analyzing those numbers right now, so we don't have a good handle on that.
I understand, I know, I know you just got all this, so it's like, yeah, okay, fair enough, it just stands out greatly.
It does.
Get a lot of money for a lot of, schoolteachers, bus drivers, probably.
There you go.
I'm with Mr. Wills, we need to ask for what we need to carry forward with what we need to do for everybody involved that works for our school system. Just, it's the right thing to do, we've got the buildings, and we need to take care of the staff and all the things to take care of our biggest asset.
You're not going to get a domestic work?
Absolutely, that should be told as well.
And this, again, this compensation study and the market adjustments are just that, the market adjustment. This is about being competitive.
Right.
Now, this isn't just about just paying people more money.
Right.
This is about being competitive in a market, so that we don't have schools that have 74% of the teachers having five or less years of experience. And that's impacting the job that we do, the bottom line job of instruction and education of our students, of being impacted by so many new people for so long. You know, like you mentioned, this is the seventh year in a row now that we've had 60 or more new folks, and it is impacting our instruction.
The change of teacher impacts our school greatly, as in any other business it would. The more turnover you have, the less productive that business is, the more it costs. Like right here, it talks about the HR management, you need it, because you're running up the price because you're doing more background checks and all that. Well, it all snowballs, no matter what, it costs more to keep replacing people, and it's not fair to have to do that, just because we're not competitive in the marketplace.
And that's the message I hope we're saying, it's about being competitive.
Absolutely.
That's what it's, it's not just about being competitive.
Oh, yes, absolutely it's not.
Sweet says, more and more of our funding each year is going into teacher training, new teacher academies, that kind of thing. We would still focus it on continuing education and that kind of thing, but it'd be nice to be able to offer to our three-year, you know, like that, rather than have to constantly spend orientation.
You're wanting your two-year, three-year, leave, you're wanting your two...
And on a big job that comes, bringing folks in.
Any business spends the most on their employees at the beginning.
Absolutely.
The training piece. We don't get to realize the benefit of that.
With all your hard work.
And they're good people, they're good, we are good folks, we just need to keep them.
It's not like the league profession.
They're just, they're, you know, there are a few that do, but there's, but that's no different than any place else. So, you see anything in that, in that list of positions that you're looking at and saying that's really a priority? We're going to come with some thoughts, is what we'd like to do, but I also want to make sure that you've had the opportunity to give some guidance.
That piece of it is where we're going to have to, you, the principals, other division leadership to tell us. You've already told us we need all these, but, you know, what, what I guess we need to hear is, which one, Rick.
Can't do it. And I'll give an example, the English language teacher, we're at three, we already know we're going through an audit, state audit on that, we already know that we're going to be told we need more, so it's just a matter of how quickly we have to...
How much do we fund with that, for those to increase?
It's just whatever the SOQ number is, I mean, I don't know, it's not much, it would all be new money, this would all be new money, it's not...
With the SOQs, with EL teachers, we meet the time, we meet the number of teachers that we need for EL, just not the time requirement because of, they travel from building to building to building.
That's part of our issue, is, yes, we have the right number of people, but now we have to have a certain number of minutes per student of direct instruction, and we're not able to do that with the number of people that we have, because they're having to go from school to school. That's just, one example out of 31.7.
Why we only got 30.7?
Anything to comment to this question?
So what we'll do is we'll come, we'll come to you on next Wednesday with a recommended budget for you to vote.
You have a comment on it?
No, I just wasn't interested.
Rick, go ahead, go ahead.
We talked about the salary and those type of things, obviously, and you look at some of the requests that are on this list, and it's a lot of personnel-type requests, instructional people and those type of things, but we remember back from the pay point thing, it said basically we needed 63 more instructional positions. So even though it's almost a two-pronged attack that you're going here with trying to retain, keep people, you are working on those salaries, but at the same time, without having the number of support that they need while they're doing the job, that also takes people away, and that's why there are quite a few of those positions, they're needed positions, but it's really a two-pronged attack, getting the salaries up and then getting the other support people, or the instructional people in the building, to help the people who are there who will get a salary increase hopefully, but also they will have the support of some of these other positions to help, and that's a large part of retention, where people just feel like they're just not going to put a load on the work.
Sure, they are.
Good point, Bob.
Anything else? VSBA business, oh, Mr. Wills.
You will all remember, our friend Will started this as president of the VSBA, and it's something we've participated in over the year. So attached in our document there is the guide of selection, and also the previous list of folks that have been on it. So we've kind of put out to schools to give us some suggestions, but I also wanted to get if you guys have any suggestions that you want us to consider, that we can bring back to you. And I do not have the complete list for schools yet, so we have, every year we have, and you can see by the list that we've, that we look at over the past six years. If you have ideas, please let me know.
All right. Update on AS Rose Elementary School renovation project, Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. We have finalized the amount of money that we have available for renovations for AS Rose Elementary School, and we're going to have about, between propers and money that we have in our capital improvements account, we're going to have right around $3.1 million in order to do renovations at AS Rose Elementary School, which is great news. We thought we were going to have 2.7, but it's, it is 3.1, which is fantastic. Roof bids are out, they were advertised on Friday, February 22nd. The pre-bid conference for the roof is March the 12th at 10:00 a.m., and then bids are due on March the 20th at 2:00 p.m. We expect substantial completion of the roof project on August the 2nd. OWPR has designed the entire roof replacement, they're going to exist the, they're going to replace the existing ballast membrane roof with a new adhered single-plate EPDM membrane, and then the existing shingle roof will be replaced with new architectural shingles over a new roof felt on existing eight-inch by 12-inch sloping wood deck, so...
Is that going to be done over the summer?
That, they'll actually start this spring, after the bids, the bids are due on March the 20th, so likely they'll start in April and May, and then it will be complete August the 2nd.
So it's going to be, they're going to be working on that during instructional time?
Probably not during instructional time, after hours and on weekends, so we'll clarify that at the pre-bid meeting on March the 12th.
What's that?
I said, if we miss me more days of snow days, we might have hours of weekends.
Well, you don't want to put the roof on too soon because of wind.
So that, I'm really looking forward to that, that aesthetically will make a huge difference in the look of that building. OWPR, the architect, has also met with staff to get input on the design of, the redesign of the building. They met within February the 7th. They, OWPR has completed the layout plan, and they're going to meet with the faculty again next week to show the layout that they have designed. Their focus is on security, ADA compliance, and then also retaining the current number of classrooms that we have, but making the changes that they need to make in order to make sure that we have bathrooms that are the size that they're supposed to be, and making, they want to try to have the front entrance at the front of the building, so they're trying to add additional parking spots there at the front so that it could be a secure front entrance, much like we did at Reston Jeffries Elementary School with the secure front entrance. So they are focusing on those types of things, and Randy Jones and I have talked at length about what the expectation is, and they've got, they've got great ideas, I'll see the design next Wednesday, I believe, so I'm looking forward to that as well. So be happy to answer schedule. The schedule for the renovation package is we hope to have the construction documents complete by the end of April, and then advertise for bids by the end of April, first part of May. Bids will be due mid to end of May, and then we'll have a notice to proceed for the contractor in first part of June, so that's a quick turnaround time. I understand from several architect people that this is a great time to bid the roof package, and we're hoping that it's also going to be a great time to bid the actual renovation package, so we will see. But final completion is expected, so this project is going to be over, you know, it's going to be summer, and then over the school year, but completion will be mid, end of July 2020. So looking forward to getting going with that.
Any discussion on it? Food service management company request for proposal, Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. Every five years, Warren County Public Schools is required to go out, go through the request for proposal process to select a food service management company. The food service management company request for proposal has been reviewed by the Department of Education and has been approved for publication. Key dates for the proposal, the RFP was sent out on February the 14th, we have a mandatory pre-proposal meeting on March the 4th, proposals are due March the 22nd. After that, we will interview the prospective companies, and we will have discussion here at the April 17th work session, and then we will request approval of the food service management company at the May 1st board meeting. It's, this is something that we do every five years, it's, be happy to answer the questions.
Textbook adoption, Mr. Fox.
Tonight, we have two members of the instructional resource team with us, and they've done a lot of work and research in preparing us for textbook adoption. We have Justin Lefay, who's our instructional resource teacher for math, science, and STEM, and Heather Bragg, who is our instructional resource teacher for English, history, and foreign language.
Hi, everybody. On board docs, on the attachment, we are looking at pages two and four, those are the recommended textbooks for adoption. These were options from Virginia Department of Education's list of approved textbooks for math and social studies. These were sent out to teachers, to all staff members, to be able to give their input into which program to go with. It was at Samuel's Public Library for community input as well, and based off of the feedback that we got from that, and some cost considerations, these are the books that we are requesting adoption. So that's two, pages two and four in the document.
And when will we be using these books? Next year, or about a year?
Well, this, so this is, so adoption is, yeah. So we have to adopt based off of PDAE rule. What we can purchase of that, that's going to be the decision, and that's what pages, the rest of the pages that are in there, the first page, the third page, and the fifth page, go into what books we're actually requesting, and it would be a total request of $470,000. And that would cover, on page two, you can see the math, sorry, on page, sorry, on page three, you can see the math textbooks that we're, that money would purchase, and those classes that would not receive textbooks, and it hurts that we're doing math and social studies in the same year, this year, and that's just how it felt with PDAE's calendar. And then on page five is the social studies, what we would be getting and what we would not be getting with that money. So you can see there's a lot of holes in there, and one of the things that Heather and I have tried to, we've tried to problem solve that, and I'm going to pass one of these out, you guys can take, I want to pass that along. We'd like to get on to a seven-year cycle textbook purchasing.
When was the last time?
2012, and that's, that's part of the issue too, we purchased multiple subjects in 2012, so all of our subscriptions are running out right now. So there are some classes right now that are going to deal without the online portion of their textbook, so that we can try to get as much as we can for math and social studies textbook.
So there's an online portion and then the actual textbook?
Yes.
And how much are each of those used for students? I mean, do they predominantly use online, or...
That is a very good question, and what we've found in this whole process of finding these costs, there is minimal cost between the two, and by minimal, like $10 in some places.
The difference, yes.
Yeah.
So to get both of them, it's like a $10 difference, as opposed to just getting one of the other books?
Yeah, some, yeah, it's...
The textbook companies have paired their online editions with the purchase of a physical book. So when you get a book, you get a free online subscription. If you buy just a class set of books, then you have to buy additional online licenses that are at about a $10 difference, if it's that much.
So you can see where we've done that in pages, I think, two and four of that document, where we've only asked for a certain amount of text and digital, and then the rest digital. It's to save a little bit of money where we can, quite honestly. So the paper that I sent out to you guys is the seven-year schedule that we think would work best for us. It's going to be extraordinarily difficult to purchase multiple subjects in one year, so we're trying to avoid that. If we were going to do a full math purchase, we'd probably be looking at $800,000 just for all the math textbooks. So what we would like to be able to do is do one core subject per year for a four-year span, have a three-year span where we can fill in gaps in any of the, any of the non-core, but still have money set aside during those years for the next round, so that at some point, we can provide a full curriculum, full resource curriculum. Some of our content, some of our classes that are there are still using books that are substantially outdated, but they, the priority goes to the SOL classes and those sorts of things. But the priority goes to the SOL classes and those sorts of things.
Is page one is the total cost?
So page one is the total cost.
Your recommendation.
Yeah. And I think this, so we took a little bit off of there. We took the super kids off of there. Yes, we would like $575,000. That would help us to fill some of those digital resources that have run out. The $470,000 would just be the new textbook purchases.
I think one of the things that's happening when we have had to sort of piecemeal our contracts outside of the, you know, the purchase of the textbook with the digital subscriptions happening in English and middle school right now, an area of great need. And, you know, they don't have digital access without paying for an add-on subscription because we're outside of the contract. So when we piecemeal through the years, we're not, I don't think we're really saving anything by having to then go to these year after year after year subscriptions until it's time to adopt again. And I do think that the teachers are seeing, you know, a disconnect in what they're used to having access to, then they don't have access and it becomes a school's burden.
Kathy, one of the questions you ask is how much do teachers use the textbooks? And frankly, some of the veterans, they've been here for a while, they rely less on textbooks because they've developed materials over time. But we have the case of a first-year person and we've heard of the issue that we've had recently. New people don't have those resources. To have a textbook or an online resource, it's paramount because they're coming in blind. Because oftentimes the mentor they have, they haven't had time to collect more materials either.
So with us moving to where most children in the near future will have a lab pop of some sort in school, we're not going to have any savings to do away with all textbooks and have everything online? It would still cost us.
Not as it's currently set up.
That is amazing.
Yep. There is an option where we would go to online subscriptions. However, the reason we're able to do the VDOE textbooks is we don't have the resources to go through the approval process in our own division on anything that's not approved by VDOE and meet those requirements.
Yeah, is that, I don't know, a competitive type market with textbooks? Arnold can send out his and I got mine that I'm trying to sell. Is there any way of squeezing it tighter or is it pretty much a monopoly?
I think there's multiple textbook companies, but they're all running within the same pricing. So even though you have multiple companies to choose from, the competition part of it doesn't seem to be driving costs down amongst them.
And quite honestly, Virginia's hurt more than other states by this because we're non-common core. Textbooks are written for common core and then adapted to meet Virginia needs. So for elementary, we only have two different textbooks to look at from that. Two different companies, there's not that supply and demand to battle.
Right. Seems like a monopoly many. Hey, you did soften the border, can we do textbooks? You were working my garage.
You got started on there.
So having done all of that analysis and worked in a previous life, so thank you. It's quite an ordeal to go through and there's an awful lot to look at. And to get something like this together on a four and five-page report is, we need to look at how we're going to fund this. You know, this is not included in our budget. Typically, what we have done in the past is use carryover dollars to start chunking away at this. This year, we already know what we're going to spend the carryover dollars on. So that's a piece that we don't have. Well, 470.
470,000 would be.
Is that a figure on this somewhere?
It's not because I didn't update it after we had.
470, so, but really, I mean, the true need is 575.
575, yeah.
And what does this have to do with that?
Well, the way the regulations are written, you have to adopt it, you don't have the purpose.
But do you have an app rate that you have?
It's a, you know. We have a textbook fund, there is money in it, but it's not very much.
We, yeah, we've actually, that's why it's 470 and not higher. We've actually calculated that that money is going to go to that.
Yeah, that's one of the, you're right, that's one of the, and we have, over time, we have stuck money in there. But in leaner budget years, we just haven't. That's a reality of our operating budget as well.
So we're pushing for the teachers and trying to get everything we can out of those without money to turn around and email or whatever.
It's nothing money can't solve. But that's the reality of, that's the reality of our situation. When we are more funded at the level we are, our per pupil is one of the lowest in the area. We're in the, you know, 100, I think, might get this wrong, but it's either 113 or 118 in the state. You know, we're down in the bottom third. These are the types of issues that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. We're trying to address everything. It's a big push to keep our people here. If we don't have the right folks staying and doing the job, it doesn't matter what kind of equipment we give them to do. So we've got to do that. So that's the reason for this. But I, you know, we need to look at textbooks, we need to look at the materials as well. Because if they don't have it, that's a struggle.
Do you have any idea, Greg, with the reassessments being done, what kind of a dollar amount is going to come into the county with the reassessments?
10%. I don't know what that means for dollars, but I know it's a 10%.
10% increase over last year's collection?
10%, yes.
Tax value, I guess.
Yeah, so 66, so that means what the, the way I understand it, what the board supervisors will need to advertise is a 60, 59 or 60% rate. And then anything, to get back up to that 66 where it currently is, that would be considered a tax increase.
I think what they have to do is if the assessed value of properties went up 10%, then they have to equalize the tax rate from the 66 I think it is now down to whatever rate, based on those new assessments, would collect the same amount of money for the county. And then if they want to generate additional revenue, they would have to advertise it as a tax increase. They can't let it at 66 cents and say, well, we're not raising taxes because the assessed values went up. And that's state law that requires them to do that, so.
And one of the things Mr. Stanley mentioned in his comments last week, you'll remember, that 20% of our revenues in the county come from places like Dominion and all the gas and power lines. And their rate is based on the real estate rate. And so if it gets reduced to 60 cents, that's what they're going to be charged at. So we're actually going to lose funding from that source if we lower it from the current 66. That's my understanding. So that's another consideration, we're giving them a tax break. I'm sure they love, we all love it, it impacts our funding.
It's just money.
It's just money. It's just money. And again, the message is, I'm trying to say it as much as I can, this impacts our community across the board. You know, the more effective our schools are, the stronger our communities.
Absolutely.
And that comes with funding. But thank you for the work on the textbooks. It's what we need to move forward and. Were we trying to adopt this tonight or is this?
I mean, because it's historical.
Yeah, I mean, the adoption isn't the purchasing.
Right, right, but we do need a motion to adopt the textbook. Something like the whole thing.
Was this an action? It wasn't an action. So I think if we, it wasn't an action then.
Okay, okay, so that'll be next time. Okay. Okay, discussion of school board, BSBA Hot Topic Conference, March 13 in Whitfield. The BSBA Super Tenants Valuation Workshop will be April 10. I guess I'll be charlatan. BSBA often.
Yes.
And then the Regional Forum on April 24 in Math County. If anyone's interested in attending any of those, please let Mr. Ballantyne know. Any other business?
Close meeting.
No, no, just before.
This motion is made with this open public meeting, the Warren County School Board will come to a closed meeting for the Central Tenants Code, Section 2.2-3711, School Board is asked to discuss the following matters, closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion, Consideration, Interviews of Perspective Candidates for the Book, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining or Resignation of Employees of the School Board, Specifically, an Employee Personnel Issue and Section 2.2-3711A1, One, Discussion or Consideration of Honorary Degrees or Special Awards, Specifically, Consideration of Candidates for Inclusion in the Roy C. Doyle's Wall of Recognition.
Mr. Second? Mr. Ballantyne, please go roll.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mrs. McEachran?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, we are in the closing session.